Love the candy. Love the kiss. What do you want? Hey, hey, hey! Please enjoy the party! Hey, hey, hey! I am on the highway searching for love. Lie my destiny. All I want is for you to take this walk with me. Ask my car, Lord, and say, "What do you want?" Love the candy. Love the kiss. What do you want? Love the candy. Love the kiss. What do you want? Love the candy. Love the kiss. What do you want? Love the candy. Love the kiss. What do you want? Love the candy. Love the kiss. Tell my car that you want me. Love the candy. Love the kiss. Tell my car that you love me. Love the candy. Love the kiss. Tell my car that you love me.
Nunca te dije que lo que siento pensé la fuerza del tiempo. Que lo que dije creo el de acierto en el que muero de ser. Nunca te dije que no fue cierto eso de que ya no te quiero. Que mi egoísmo fue el argumento que destruyó lo que fue. Solo quiero que sepas cosas que me cayer. Solo quiero que sepas siempre te amé. Y es donde sé.
City Council Tacoma Park to order please. And our first order of business before we do the roll call is actually to swear in Councilmember Mail. Let's member Mail. If you will please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Timothy Mail.
Do you swear?
Do you swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment?
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Councilmember Ward Two?
Execute the office of Councilmember Ward Two.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
And the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
And the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Thank you very much. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I just want to take a moment and say a few words about a loss we had in our community. Anita Datar, a member of our community, was unfortunately the victim of the terrorist attacks on Friday. And we lost a great member of our community and of the world. Anita was a resident of Tacoma Park, a mother of a second grader here, a humanitarian and educator, who spent and dedicated her life to improving the health and well-being of girls and women around the world. And I'd like to take a moment tonight to just hold her, her son, and her family in our hearts and to extend to them our support and deep condolences and to extend our condolences to all of those who have been the victims of terrorist attacks around the world. Last night, a number of residents organized a candlelight vigil for Anita and the victims of the attacks. And I'd like to thank them for doing so and for everyone who was able to participate in that vigil. Anita's family and her former husband David, who is in New York with their son, sent messages of thanks for the outpouring of support and love from the community. Moving on to this evening's agenda, we have one change. We will be moving the proclamation recognizing Boy Scout Troop 33 till sometime in December. When we are looking at upcoming agenda items, next week we will be looking at and voting on a resolution welcoming Syrian refugees to our community as well as ordinances for the Colby Park Playground and discussing council procedures. On Monday, December 7th, we will have the second reading ordinances regarding the Colby Playground and then also discussing providing funding to supplement 21st Century Community Learning Center Grants that is running a program at Essex House. We will also be taking up the long-awaited amendments to the noise ordinance. Our next meeting and our final one before taking a winter break will be on Monday, December 14th. Hopefully, we will be awarding a contract for the police community relations consultant at that time. And we will also be looking at, in a work session, an overview of the Montgomery County Public School capacity. Recently, Montgomery County Public Schools released their capital improvement budget and it impacts a number of our schools in the area. And we thought Councilmember Mail suggested. And we agreed that it would be a good idea for us to have a work session to discuss what that, how that impacts our community. So those are our upcoming agenda items. And then council will be on recess until January. All right, now we can begin public comments.
Thank you. My name is Lois Wessel. I live at 7005 West Morland Avenue. And it's really exciting to see the new council and to see my own Ward Three representative, a person of color on the council, and my mayor, a woman. So I applaud all of you for your hard work. I'm here today to start the discussion, which I know you'll pick up later, about Tacoma Park receiving Syrian refugees. And I want to tell a little story. Seventy-five years ago, a German Jewish teenager who had been sent to safety in England in 1939 on kinder transport as a 13-year-old arrived in New York where she was reunited with her parents. After a brief stay in New York, the three of them traveled by bus to Scattergood, Iowa, where the American Friends Service Committee turned a school into a hostel for European refugees. As the Nazi terror spread through Europe, the members of the Disciples of Christ in a tiny Eureka, Illinois, decided to go beyond reading newspaper headlines and praying for the safety and offered to adopt this family. The teenager and her parents moved into a fully furnished apartment on the edge of Eureka College campus and were welcomed to that community. That community knew no Jews, let alone foreign-born Jews. The father got a job auditing municipal books in a small Illinois town. The mother got a job at the college kitchen. The teenager got a free college education there. That teenager was my mother, Erma Guard Wessel, who died last year at the age of 88. She never forgot the fear and desperation of refugees. And in her work as a social worker and community activist, she was a lifelong advocate for those who came to America after she did. My last conversation with her before she died of cancer was on the plight of the unaccompanied minors coming from Central America. And she said we needed to do things to help them because she had been an unaccompanied minor. I grew up hearing stories from my mother and grandmother about the painful end of their pleasant life in Germany and the beginning of their new and eventually prosperous life in the United States. Right now, I'm particularly proud of my hometown of New Haven, Connecticut, for welcoming the Syrian refugees who were turned away from Indianapolis. According to Chris George, the Executive Director of Iris, the Integrated Refugee and Immigrant Services, New Haven, there are plenty to double the number of refugees settling in New Haven. I would love to be equally proud of my other hometown of Tacoma Park, its elected officials and its people, for welcoming this new generation of immigrants and offering them what others offered my mother a long time ago. This is truly the American way. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Thomas Neffew. I'm at 7300 Birch Avenue in Tacoma Park, Ward One. I'm a member of Montgomery County Civil Rights Coalition. I'm here to applaud all of you, especially our new mayor, Kate Stewart, for your willingness to consider a resolution that would be in support of Syrian refugees in the face of our governor's recent request not to settle them in Maryland until no threat to safety could be assured. As you know, that statement was misleading in many ways. First, Syrian refugees are fleeing the very violence he claims they might cause. Second, there's already a vetting process in place that if anything is too strict and too glacial to do anything but a small fraction of refugees any good. Finally, there's no such thing as complete safety. We need to live our lives and be the people and city we want to be without the dishonest pretense of assured complete security. I've brought along a proposed resolution that I think you have in front of you that I hope you'll look at and consider. It's based on one passed by the Chicago City Council last week. It's non-binding, of course, and it simply states a number of facts about Tacoma Park, the refugee crisis, and current process of admitting refugees. And closes, would close, by reaffirming that our city remains a sanctuary city, open to refugees, urging diplomatic efforts to resolve the crisis, streamlining the lengthy vetting process, and urging everyone in our community to help with refugee organizations and relocation. Why is this important to Tacoma Park? Well, for one thing, we're a sanctuary city. As such, Governor Hogan's statement deserves a considered Little D democratic response by our leaders. If it's fair for our governor to use his bully pulpit to make pronouncements about immigration and refugee policy, it's fair, in fact, it's necessary, for you to use yours. For another, Tacoma Park is a wonderfully diverse home to many foreign-born residents, over a third, according to the census. Finally, we're a good city. This, not fear and not hostility, is who we are. Why is this important to me? For one thing, like many of us, all of us really, I have an immigrant heritage. More than that, though, I see this as a civil rights issue because of the blatantly xenophobic, Islamophobic rationale for excluding Syrian refugees, being advanced and encouraged by so many. This wouldn't be an issue if, say, a stream of Ukrainian or other European immigrants were suddenly to materialize. We should be honest with ourselves that this debate about refugees is really a debate about some people's discomfort with American Muslims. Some sentiments must not go unchallenged. A pro-refugee resolution would be taking a stand both for fellow human beings across the globe and for our fellow citizens here at home. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Keys. I am newly back in Ward Three on 331 Lincoln Avenue. I'm a proud Tacoma Park resident for about 15 years. And my day job is, I'm a law professor at the University of Baltimore School of Law, where I teach immigration and refugee law and direct the immigration clinic. I personally have represented dozens, if not at this point, more than 100 refugees and asylum seekers in my career, and I teach students to do the same. And I'm applauding the council for considering the resolution that you will be discussing next week. I have read it. I've read it carefully. As a law professor, I have to read things carefully. And it's accurate, it's measured, and it's important. There is no doubt in my mind that in 50 years' time, somebody will look at a resolution like this and think, "What was the controversy?" We have a chance in Tacoma Park to align ourselves squarely on the right side of history with this. And the fact that there is really no supportable argument based on evidence people can point to against it certainly is a reason that the council can adopt this quickly and hopefully without controversy. Apart from it being accurate and important as an issue, it's incredibly important that refugees not just be admitted to a country, but that they feel welcomed. By the time refugees have come to our shores, they have been through enough and usually more than enough. When they come here and face the challenges of integration, it's a whole new journey and often a difficult one. When they hear that they're not welcome, it makes that journey of reintegration, of integration, excuse me, in our communities very difficult. So even if this is symbolic and Tacoma Park doesn't end up receiving Syrian refugees, it's important because it puts a voice out there that says, "No, you are welcome. There are Americans who support you being here. There are Americans who want you to be able to thrive in our communities." For that reason, I sincerely hope the council will adopt the resolution and let Tacoma Park continue its proud tradition of welcoming people in need of refuge. Thank you so much for considering it.
Good evening. My name is Linda Rabbin. I live at 402 Lincoln Avenue in Ward Two. I've been a resident of Tacoma Park since 1989. I'm also a longtime human rights activist and the author of two books on sanctuary and asylum. And when I wrote my first book on sanctuary, I had the pleasure of including the story of Tacoma Park's continued support for sanctuary. And I would like to remind people, some of you were not on the council in 2007, when there was an opportunity to revive the sanctuary tradition here, 22 people lined up to speak in favor of that and only one person spoke against. And I felt that that truly reflected the sentiment of this community vis-à-vis refugees and asylum seekers. So Tacoma Park has a long sanctuary tradition that I believe it's important to uphold and advance. And it's also a way of showing solidarity with the thousands of Syrian and other refugees who live in Maryland. I also believe that it's important to send a clear message to Governor Hogan that he does not speak for the people of Maryland. I really doubt that he consulted with any refugees or advocacy organizations or immigration lawyers before he made his statement. And I think it was a shameful statement. And we have the opportunity to counter very retrograde sentiments that are being advanced by reactionary people in our society. So I hope that next week, the council will vote in favor of a strong resolution welcoming Syrian and other refugees to our community. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Leanna Smith. I've lived in Tacoma Park probably for over 30 years. I'm in Ward One as well. First, I just want to thank the mayor and council for all the amazing work and the public for all the work that they do for our community. I'm a very active political activist. I'm on the steering committee of Jewish Voice for Peace DC Metro Chapter. But first and foremost, I'm a parent and I'm a teacher. I teach ESAL students at our local Tacoma Park Elementary School. And a number of people have been talking about the refugees that may be coming. We already have quite a number of them in our community. I talk with some of these children who don't really comprehend what it was that they left, but they, you know, refer and talk about certain things that children who do not go through the refugee experience would never come up with some of the things they talk about. And I think it's profoundly important that not only are we welcoming to refugees and who we see may be coming, but also that we send the message to everyone who is part of our community already that we are welcoming, that we are understanding what it is that they may face. So again, I am thrilled to hear that you are considering this for next week and would strongly support either the resolution that was put in front of you, the one based on that from Chicago, or whatever we can work at to come together. I would be happy to help be a resource. One other thing is just to emphasize the very real danger that so many of these refugees are facing. My daughter is half-Palestinian. She's a Muslim. And she has personally known of friends, two of them, who were tortured and killed by the Assad regime in Syria. So there are very, very real implications if we do not accept refugees to our shores. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I was just looking around to see if there was anyone else who wanted to speak on this topic. I didn't want to interrupt. Did you want to also speak on this? I don't want to interrupt. My name is Nancy Cohen, and I live at 7300 Baltimore Avenue. And on November 16th, I did email a note to the mayor, city council members, and city managers. I don't know if you received it. I'm getting that look that you didn't. You did?
Yes.
Okay, yay. Okay. I'm here talking about the B parking permits. And this is a formal request to the mayor and the city council members to enact an ordinance that removes from the city code that section that created the B parking permits. The existing ordinance has resulted in up to nine non-area residents receiving permits to park in Area A1, more specifically in the 7300 block of Baltimore Avenue. I live at 7305. So I have nine people who are eligible to park in front of my home. And our street is already crowded with resident vehicles and service vehicles. And so it does create some sort of crowdedness there. Residents on Baltimore Avenue and adjacent streets were never invited to weigh in on the ordinance that created the B permits. I do welcome that we were asked to weigh in on having trees in front of our yards, but we were never asked to weigh in on the B permits. And it felt disrespected by this previous council and created a number of troubling issues, not the least of which, it kind of permits citizens against citizens because it does result in those of us who live there trying to speak to people who feel they have a right now to park there, who are blocking driveways, taking up two spaces. And unfortunately, when it snows, parking in spaces that we've cleared. And our comments to individuals about a certain degree of courtesy has not always been returned with equal courtesy. Historically, the A1 parking permits were instituted to make it possible for area residents to park in front of or near their homes when the area was inundated with vehicles of non-residents who were attending Montgomery College and using the metro. I don't know if many of you remember that, but it was a mess back— Carrie, I know you do. It was a mess back then. We had people parking, blocking driveways. It was, the kids and commuters were everywhere. So it appears kind of counterintuitive that a previous city council would have enacted an ordinance that has unintended consequences of permitting this encroachment to happen legally. Furthermore, the qualifying eligibility for receiving B permits living more than five blocks from a bus stop or further than 3/4 of a mile from the metro probably eliminates any Tacoma Park city resident from eligibility. I don't want to create, in my recommendation, additional discord between residents. And so I would like to suggest— Oh, no.
If you could just wrap up. I can't do anything. Just finish, wrap up, please.
Okay. So I'd like to recommend that when these permits expire in June 2016, that no more permits are issued. In the meantime, I would really appreciate it if letters would go out to the people who currently have B permits to disperse them around the community if those residents on those streets consent with one on Tacoma Avenue, two on Albany, two on New York Avenue, and two on the 7300 block of Baltimore, and two on the 7400 block of Baltimore, and enforcing this. And also sending a letters to those who have permits that they should attempt to use only one parking space when parking and not to park in a snow-cleared spot. I know that there is a parking study, but I don't think that it's going to be available probably at the beginning of the summer, but I don't think this needs to wait until then. And so I would really urge you to pass this ordinance that would eliminate and then have this transition period. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Jane Machui, Ward Two resident for over 30 years, Boyd Avenue. Also a founder of Posna, Parents of Special Needs Adults. I'm asking you, when you're thinking about opening doors to everybody, consider the people that are poor already and have been here, my son who were born here. Don't take away some of their help and give it to people. You know, I emphasize with these people, but my son was hired by a refugee here in Tacoma Park who treated him like crap. And my— he was totally treated with disrespect and fired without giving any warning. And when I tried to explain to him, "My son has autism," you should— he wouldn't listen. He says, "Your son should act like a man, like me. I traveled thousands of miles because I was under duress and all this. And so your son should act like a man like me." And sometimes, this was a very well-known refugee in this. And he really, like I said, he treated my son with great disrespect. And so please take that consideration that sometimes people, when they go through that, people that are low down can kick people lower down if you're not careful. And also, I'm concerned about some of the people because of their sexism, the way they treat their women. And I'm not saying they're all bad, but I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Hubner, Carroll Avenue. It's not a comment, two questions. Could anybody update me about the dog park at some point in time and about the status of the junction? I went on the line and the information was lacking or I couldn't find it. And I brought copies of it, if anyone is wondering what I'm saying. The information doesn't seem to be available. And I was just trying to search it out before I came and asked this silly question. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome, Councilmember Kovar. Welcome, Councilmember Koreshi. Welcome, Mayor Stewart. Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue, on elections. You go to the doctor for a persistent headache. You're happy when the doctor prescribes a pain reliever and the headache goes away. Eliminating pain is a real benefit, but if the doctor fails to find your small, treatable tumor, that's a bad thing. When I worked for a computer center, my boss had a term for acting without fully diagnosing the situation, symptom-stomping. And I'm worried that that's what we're doing with elections, dealing only with the symptom of low voter turnout. Councilmember Schultz has dug deeper and found the problem of uncontested elections. Councilmember Smith has dug deeper and found a system that fails to produce diverse representative councils. What resonates most with me is Councilmember Koreshi's statement of last week, identifying civic engagement as a priority. My sense is that civic disengagement is the underlying problem here. Disengagement is understandable. We have a United States Congress that's inept at best. While it's unfair, contempt for the federal level of government extends to other levels. And our tough economic times limit the city's ability to respond to expressed needs and makes for hard choices. It can sometimes seem as if we care more about dogs and red foxes than about people. In Tacoma Park's past, people have become engaged when facing a serious challenge, such as a proposed freeway, and when moved by effective mobilizers, such as Sam Abbott. Tacoma Park has changed, so the way to engage people may have changed as well. In any case, I don't want a serious challenge for the city. We now have a prescription for low voter turnout, election synchronization. I hope that in the coming months, the council will leave to staff and the Board of Elections the work of figuring out how to fill that prescription. I hope the council will focus on identifying the underlying problem. I hope the council will focus on identifying the underlying problem and planning a course of action to deal with it. It's the council's work that's most important here. Increasing voter turnout may not do much to increase engagement, whereas if we increase engagement, voter turnout will take care of itself. I have 21 seconds. We'll also mention that tonight's agenda talks about the administrative session at the end, and it's discussing matters of organization. That seems to me to be a very vague description. I hope that in the future, we can get better descriptions, and we can have less of the council's work done in secret. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. So we'll turn now to council comments. Any comments from the council? Councilman Schultz?
I wanted to thank those who came before us already this evening to talk about the possibility of assisting or welcoming Syrians into our country, into our state, and into our city. I've already spoken on it in the past, and people know where I stand on this. I'm looking forward to adopting a resolution. And I hope—and I want to say this—is that we do more than just pass a resolution. I don't think it's the city of Tacoma Park as a government. It's not our responsibility to do this, other than passing a resolution. I think it's the community, all of us who make up the city of Tacoma Park. It's all of our collective responsibility to figure out how we can help Syrian families find their way into our city and help them settle here and help them feel welcome. And there are organizations—I know I've heard—that are already working on this in other parts of the country. I've found two people in my ward already who are interested because both of their occupations are related to immigration, refugee resettlement, and they've offered to pitch in and be of assistance. I'm hoping the faith-based community in our city can also work with us on this, and others who have experience or knowledge of the laws and sources of money to help people get here because getting a Syrian family, say, from Syria or from Germany or wherever they might be at the present time, is going to cost somebody some money. And I doubt a Syrian family has got the bucks to fly economy from someplace in Eastern Europe to the United States, so it's going to cost us some money. So what I'm saying is that I think that passing a resolution here will be the beginning of a process and not the culmination of something. I wanted to mention that this past week, I had an opportunity to meet with a member of the Maryland State Department of Planning, a woman by the name of Kristin Mitchell, who is the supervisor of sustainability and development in the Maryland Department of Planning. And I invited her to come to Ward Six, particularly the crossroads area, to meet with us, to talk about—so that we can talk to the state about what we're trying to do on New Hampshire Avenue and in the crossroads area with our sector plan that we've adopted there and in anticipation of there being a purple line stopped there, and to help the state of Maryland understand who we are, a city of 17,000 people and a county of 1 million that needs assistance in terms of ideas and perhaps technology, other means by which we can help push the redevelopment process in the crossroads so that we can fulfill the goals of the Tacoma-Langley Sector Plan. One of the key aspects of this is that the crossroads is really a bi-county area, and part of the crossroads area is in Prince George's County, part of it is Montgomery and Tacoma Park. And that makes it a little difficult to do coordinated economic development and to do coordinated marketing and that sort of thing because you're dealing with two very large county governments. And that's where I think the state of Maryland could come in and be of assistance in the governor's office. So I'm looking forward to continued conversations with Kristin and her staff. We met in the offices of the Crossroads Development Authority for about two hours and learned an awful lot about—learned a lot from each other about what the state's capacity is, and they were learning a little bit about what we've accomplished in terms of our planning for that area. It was very exciting. I think it's a step in the right direction, and I'm looking forward to making some progress in that area to get the state of Maryland to be involved in the process of trying to realize the goals of sustainability, economic development, sustainability in the crossroads in New Hampshire Avenue area. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Mail?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. First, I wanted to thank the people of Tacoma Park and of Ward Two for my reelection. It's a pleasure to be back here for a third term. Working on behalf of the city and all of you, and especially for Ward Two, is a pleasure and a joy and a challenge and a burden and an honor, and lots of other things, too. So thank you. I have really appreciated the ways that the council, the city staff, have changed and become more efficient, or just changed and tried new things in the two terms that I've served so far, and I look forward to that again. One of the things that I really hope to push in my next two years and encourage my colleagues to pursue are ways to try to adopt changes, often, I think, what are small changes faster. We can spend forever—and we've proven that—debating things endlessly, waiting for an answer for things that don't always have an answer. Those could be procedural steps; they could be small changes in city services. And one of the, I think, advantages, pleasures of working at local government is that we can try things that don't necessarily have an answer yet and see if they work. And as long as we're open to being wrong and changing those if they don't work, then we can move forward faster and move forward as a community, move forward with times, move forward with our changing residents. So I hope to pursue some things over my next two years to suggest many small ways that I think we can try new things in the community that provide better services or more efficient services, a better return on investment, and better live up to the values and the quality of life that people want in the city. Next, I want to thank the mayor for speaking about Anita yesterday. I won't repeat what the mayor said earlier about Anita and how tragic her loss is, but I was also reflecting on the fact that in Ward Two, in the past 14 or 16 months, we've actually had four violent deaths of residents. And just how sad that makes me that we've been touched by that many tragedies in a short period of time, three of which were on the same street, and none of which are particularly closely related to one another. But it's nonetheless something to notice and to think about. And lastly, a member of the public spoke about syncing up our elections. I was really pleased that a majority of residents in the city in every single ward voted for the city council to move forward to try to see if we could make that change happen. And I would suggest for city staff that one of the very first things we should be doing is asking the head of the state Board of Elections, what is the process and what is the timeline that we need to pursue in order to have it be an option for us to get on the state ballot in 2018, if that's what we choose to do. Because that timeline set under state law, set under state law passed a few years ago, is an important determinant of how fast we need to move, when we need to hold work sessions and public hearings in terms of making a change like this happen. So I think if we can get that information from the state, it will help us determine the timeline that we need to move on, and we need to work with the community to move forward on to see if we can make that change a reality. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First point is, I'd like to ask the city manager to talk to Mike Riley, Director of Montgomery County Parks Department, and see if he could give us an update on the playground equipment at Sligo Creek Park. I understand that maybe a year ago, two years ago, it was up for redevelopment, but I haven't heard anything since.
A particular place in Sligo Creek Park?
It's the playground. There's a—
The one at Kenneb—
Kennebeck and Sligo Creek Parkway. A resident—while I was door-knocking during campaign season, a resident stopped me and wanted an update, and I don't have any new information. So I appreciate that. The other thing is, this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend Washington Adventist inaugural gala—Washington Adventist Hospital's inaugural gala. It was a very nice evening, got a chance to talk to President Wengsness about the recent decision for the hospital to move. It looks like the hospital does want to maintain services in Tacoma Park, but we shall see. We need to stay on top of them and also reach out to the state and the county and see if they can support us economically for those services that residents may want, but the hospital does not want to provide. And finally, I was appointed to the Steering Committee for the 21st Century Grant. That's from the Department of Labor—or, I mean, Department of Education, I'm sorry. This is a really big deal for Tacoma Park. We will have an after-school program at Essex House. Around 30 kids will participate. Over $1 million will come to our community and Silver Spring over the next three years. Training for the program will start December 7th, and I hope my colleagues will join me in supporting after-school programming on Fridays during the program for the rest of the year. This is an incredible opportunity. I believe this is the first time this has happened in Tacoma Park, so I hope everybody can join me and support the budget amendment that will be before us on December 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kareshi?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll start off with an issue that I was going to discuss second, which is what Arthur Olson brought up in regards to the synchronization—excuse me—of the elections. And I've had a conversation with Councilman Mail and Mayor Stewart about this as well. As a former member of the Board of Elections who looked at this issue very closely, I'll be completely frank, I had quite a bit and many reservations about supporting it, and that's why I did not support it publicly. And at this point, I'm still not there yet as to the benefit of synchronization. I think that the purpose behind it is quite noble, and it's—there's no question that were our elections synchronized, it's going to increase voter turnout. But I think the concern is, is what Arthur has raised, which is increased voter turnout doesn't mean increased engagement. And a perfect example, which I'd like to take some credit for, but I'd give credit to the rest of the Board of Elections, which is when we had an early voting site at the same park that Jared just mentioned, at the bottom of Kennebeck and Sligo Mill, it was amazing to see on that Saturday or Sunday afternoon what engagement can mean and what results we can get from our efforts. So I just want to be very cautious, I think, as a city, to not allow just the benefit of increased voter turnout to somehow suggest to us that we've done everything that we need to do, which is our goal and should be our priority, to touch every member of our community. And I've discussed this with Councilman Mail. The other issue that I personally have, and I think that it's going to be a logistical one, which we're going to have to address because the community has spoken—I think that that's right. And, you know, when folks were asking me during the election, "Well, Rizzi, where do you stand on this?" I was like, you know, if you read that question in just a vacuum as an objective question in an objective way, it's a very legitimate—and I think more people would respond, "Yes, of course. Of course, if it's going to increase voter turnout, and we synchronize our elections, and 16-year-olds can still vote, and immigrants can still vote, and felons can still vote, then let's do it." I think that the purpose is noble, but the final issue is the logistical aspect of how are we going to make that work with the special groups in our community that are permitted to vote that sort of represent the character of our progressive elections. One concern that I have as a nerdy lawyer is when I think about felons, how do you make it logistically work? You know, are you going to have to have two lines? And if you have a separate line for felons—which I hope it doesn't get to, and many on the council have assured me that we think we can get around it—that, to me, is voter disenfranchisement at its core. So I'm really looking forward to working with Councilman Mail, Mayor Stewart, many others, who I believe have shown real motivation behind this issue because I know that, for example, Tim Mail has looked at this issue very closely and has studied it. So I look forward to working with him to ensuring if we do move forward with the synchronization process, that we do it in such a manner that, again, we don't allow increased voter turnout to us mean that we've somehow engaged every member of this community, which I think is key. Finally, I guess I want to just address the Syria issue. This issue hits very close to home for me personally, but I think I'll reserve my lengthy comments for next week, I think, when we're going to really discuss it. But I will say this: I'm a Muslim-American, and, you know, these types of issues impact, I think, everybody differently. Nobody worse than a victim of a terrorist act. But as a Muslim-American, there's a lot of feelings that you have about how you internalize these people who not only hijacked planes, but they've hijacked the peaceful faith that I was born into. And as a child of immigrants, it's even more difficult as you think about Syrian refugees. You know, the unfortunate reality is that these governors across the country, who, in my opinion, have made a decision to—which is outside the ambit of their legal authority, by the way—but to say that we're not going to allow refugees into our states under the guise of—some may argue, well-intentioned protectionism and public safety. The problem is that the facts don't support their beliefs. So to me, when—since 9/11, there's been 750,000 refugees who've come to the United States, not a single one has been found as somebody related or involved in terrorism. And many of those are from Afghanistan, from Iraq, from Syria. So to me, it's the argument of public safety almost disguised—or disguises—public safety, but it's really intolerance. And I think we need to be very careful in our community because, as a result of what's happened—even in recent weeks since November 13th and what happened in Paris—there's been a mosque that was firebombed in Florida; there was a mosque that received threats in Florida; there was a Texas mosque that was vandalized just on November 16th. A couple days ago, not far from my sister's home in Texas, in Irving, Texas, armed protesters were outside of a mosque as kids are trying to go in and just participate in their community. It's created a culture of intolerance, and it's only more alarming when you think about our national discourse of individuals who have national spotlight, calling Muslims and equating them with rabid dogs, and how there should be a database of American Muslims of—which unfortunately, I guess I'm going to have to register, which is laughable. So I support the community in any resolution that welcomes Syrian refugees to our community, and only because we need—we—this community represents inclusiveness. I'll give you one final example. An Uber driver in North Carolina was assaulted recently, a couple days ago, because the passenger thought he looked Muslim. So I want to leave everybody with that point. And the reason I leave you with that point is because after 9/11, some of the first victims of anti-Muslim hate-mongering were actually Sikhs who aren't Muslim. And I think in protection of our community members, particularly those women who walk down Maple Avenue who are Ethiopian diaspora refugees who are not Muslim, but they may look Muslim to an ignorant racist, we need to do more in this community to ensure that they're protected. And I'll leave you with one last quote, and I'll leave you— And I'll leave you with one last quote, and I'll leave you this one last quote from Anita Datar, our community member, who tragically passed and whose vigil many of us had an opportunity to attend. Her last message on Facebook is so poignant and so directly, I think, reflects how I feel on this issue, which is, quote, "This is an everyday reality for so many worldwide, including folks in Mali. It doesn't diminish the horrors of the Paris bombing, just wish more people realize that many parts of the world live in fear, and it isn't just, quote, 'something terrible' that happened." And her brother then says, Sanjeev, who I met yesterday, quote, "We know that she would want to promote education and to prevent violence and poverty at home and abroad, comma, not intolerance." So I think we should take a stand in this community. It's not a world issue, it's not a national issue, it's a local issue, and we should make sure that we send a strong message, whether it be symbolic, like you said, that this is a community that anybody can be welcome in, and including me and my family. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Couple of brief local matters. First, I had the pleasure on Saturday, and several of my colleagues were there also, and I think maybe City Manager has this on her report as well, to attend an event at the Sligo Adventist Church that was honoring two people from Ward One, who are friends and neighbors of mine, Wolfgang and Gertrude Murgner, who were instrumental in founding a group called The Village of Tacoma Park. And it's not part of the city, it's a separate volunteer, all-volunteer nonprofit group that provides rides and other services to people who are elderly or disabled, who may need assistance getting to doctor's appointments or running errands and things of that nature. And it was formally established just a little over a year ago, and already a couple hundred rides have been provided. It's a really great group. They were very deserving of getting it, and I hope people who are watching at home or here, and my colleagues as well, will pass on to their constituents. There's a need for additional volunteer drivers, as well as people who can join up. It's very, it costs $10 to join, and it's a great group. And I was involved in helping establish it also. I'm stepping down from that now, but I encourage people to take a look at The Village of Tacoma Park. Also, another of my constituents, Ms. Cohen, just mentioned the parking question, and I'll apologize, I didn't see the email you mentioned, so we can get that later, but I do know that came up when I was going door-to-door in the campaign. I think it's something that we should take a look at. On the campaign, I talked some about how Tacoma Park couldn't just think of itself as a small enclave if we ever could before, and I was talking about that from the perspective of development that's happening just outside our borders. I think what we saw in the past week was that there were things that happened much further away that affect us, and I don't want to go into detail the way, since it's already been discussed at length here, but I do strongly support our taking a stance on the Syria question, and as well as lamenting the loss of Anita Datar. I think the mayor and others who were at the event last night in commemorating her life saw firsthand what a great crowd and the outpouring of support that we have for her, and I think the mayor did a good job leading that event. I think on the Syrian question, to me, it's not just a symbolic thing, because if we draft the resolution properly, it actually relates to what we would do as a community, as opposed to just a statement about something that's happening somewhere. And I agree with the comment that was made that, you know, if another elected official is going to do that, then I think it's legitimate for us to respond. And just in terms of Rizzi's comment, I agree, we don't want to support that kind of intolerance, but I would go further and say, if we're fighting against something overseas, it certainly isn't a religion, it's just another form of intolerance. That's what our, that's what we're up against, and so to misconstrue intolerance that happens overseas as somehow a religious thing, and then respond to that with intolerance of our own, I think would be terrible. So I really do think we should approve a resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. I just have a couple of updates. Last week was a busy week for the first week for a new council. On Wednesday, I had the opportunity to testify in Rockville for the Montgomery delegation Joint Priorities Hearing. This is our state delegation meets in Rockville to hear from individuals, elected officials, organizations in Montgomery County prior to the legislative session starting in Annapolis. If people are interested, the testimony we provide is on the city website. Two of the main things we discussed was fully funding the formula for our highway user revenue fees and increasing funding for economic development initiatives in Tacoma Park, and we give some examples in that. In addition, we, I did raise the issue of Syrian refugees and talked about the need for safe havens, and it was a very good response that we got from our delegation. So that took place on Wednesday. This past Sunday, along with Councilmember Mail and Councilmember Kovar, I attended the Tacoma Park Seventh Day Adventist Church Thanksgiving Dinner last night. It was a wonderful event, got to meet in particular the youth coordinator and meet many of the young people who have grown up in Tacoma Park and now volunteering with the church, and they are very interested to be doing more in the community, so I'm sure we will be hearing from them more. I think that's it for me. City Manager?
Thank you. Got a couple of notices. The first is just a reminder about the city's holiday schedule for Thanksgiving, which is that we are closed Thursday through Sunday. It's one of the longer times when our facilities are closed. As always, the police department is open for emergency services only. Besides the award for Wolfgang and Gertrude Murgner and the wonderful vigil last night, I wanted to mention that another resident of Tacoma Park got an award this past week, Lori Kelly. She was the Maryland State winner of the I Heart Caregivers Award bestowed by AARP, and we had an award ceremony here in this auditorium. Senator Jamie Raskin, Delegate Sheila Hickson, and Representative of Congressman Van Hollen were here to also say nice things for her. And she had a portrait painted of her and her husband and was presented with this as something that helps show how much the community supports and appreciates those who take care of others in our community. And it seemed to be a theme this past week, so it was something that, leading up to Thanksgiving and even with the hard times that we're also thinking about, do make you feel good about Tacoma Park. Do want to mention that the new website did debut last week on the 17th, and we're working on it, so we'd like to hear lots of points of ways that we can improve. I think it's actually a big step forward, so I'm really pleased. And some of the nice features are the news functions and some of the items that, like the testimony that the mayor gave to the joint priorities hearing, and some other kinds of things like that will be posted in an easy-to-access location. Did get an inquiry today from one of our county council residents who wanted to know what was going on in front of his house, and it's shero painting on Carroll and Tacoma avenues in different places. And this is a, actually, implementation of a grant from over a year ago that we received. And so if anybody is interested in the plans for where that is, and I can share them with you, Councilmember Kovar, I will do so, but it's an exciting thing to get those things done. A shero is, it's the picture on the pavement of a road of a bicyclist with an arrow, so you kind of know that a bicyclist has a right to be there too. It's less than a lane, but it's to help remind people that bicyclists share the road. So that's why it's a shero, as opposed to an arrow. I never liked the name, but anyway, those are going in. I wanted to also give an update on the Stormwater MOU that worked, that we're trying to, municipalities in Montgomery County are trying to work with the county to get an agreement before December 31st. It's moving slowly. We will see what happens. Our deputy city manager, Jason Dan Weber, has made multiple calls, as have other municipal officials, to try to make sure that this moves forward, and we'll hear back, I think, shortly about what the next steps are. And that's all I have to offer for comments.
Could I ask one follow-up on the website? The pop-up at the top, does that have a finite lifespan in terms of a message that says this is a new website?
Yes, it's a 30, it was, it lasts the 30 days that the developers are still doing the tweaking, so probably mid-December it goes off.
Great. And the one thing I would note that I've seen so far is that the search function does not seem to
That's right. The search function is the major, apparently, the way that it rolls out takes about 30 days to fully engage, and I don't know. Jason, do you want to mention anything more about it?
Sure. It's a little artificial intelligence-like in that, once the website was rolled out, Google's proprietary software starts crawling and creating linkages, so every day, the search function improves its functionality, and hopefully by the end of 30 days, it's done all the crawling that it needs to do. We are, on a daily basis, submitting tickets to the company that's helping us develop the website so that we can increase the speed with which those crawls occur. The interesting thing that I learned was, when we launched, we started from scratch with the crawling. We were unable to actually have Google crawl the website until it officially launched. So as we were developing it, and during the beta period before it launched and went public, we were not able to, Google's software was not able to crawl the website. And so it's only been doing that for, since the 17th, so about a week now.
Right, and we've tried to expedite it. We tried to work with them in sending them kind of the structure of the website and a variety of things that's in their system now, but it is going to take a couple of weeks yet before that works. And frankly, I can't wait for that, because that's really what will make the site work the best.
I've also noticed that Google will return results that when you go to the webpage, the page isn't there, which is kind of the reverse of what you were talking about.
It's, I believe, in those cases, it might be finding something that used to exist and no longer does, and that's why it's turning those results, and that's something that's part of the process and that we're working on.
I'll be patient.
Thank you.
Jason, is it possible to make the squares more dynamic? Like, they could actually have, like, pre-rolls of video, or does it have to be static and just what's there is there?
I'm not sure I follow.
Like, if you go onto some sites, like theverge.com, they will do like a pre-roll of video that, you know, is on the site, but you'll see it on the homepage, and you only might see like 30 seconds of it, so there's activity going on all the time.
We will look into it. I know that one of the key things that we are trying to have is so that on the mobile device, it can be used as simply as possible without having too much extra things, but I know that there's interest in a little bit more life, so we'll see what we can do for them.
Great, and I encourage everyone to send emails to our deputy city manager and get on the website, and we'll continue to discuss this. We do now have minutes to adopt this evening, so we can move on to our work session, and the first thing is a discussion of legislative items. And am I turning this over to you?
Yeah, I'll start this. Welcome. For a new council, it gets to think of legislative items again. The 90-day session of the Maryland General Assembly starts in January. Our normal process is that we go through in the fall and then again, early January to identify the priorities that the city has for taking action in the, during the state legislature activities. One of the things, though, that are in Montgomery County and in Prince George's County, they have a process of local bills and by-county bills. And for those bills, they, before this legislature opens, they like to have their public hearings so that they can do it while they're here in Montgomery County, and the public hearings are held in Rockville. We have public hearings scheduled for local bills starting next Monday, November 30th. So the reason that these items are here today is partly to find out if there's something that we want to communicate on the November 30th date, or in the subsequent, I think, December 2nd by-county date, that the council's already taken a position on, so you know, require a new resolution, but it may be something that there is interest in conveying a city position. So we're going to go through some of that. I'll have, one of the things that we, the way that we organize here is that although I've traditionally overseen in general legislative activities, Jesse's taken on a much greater role of following the legislative bills. Emily helps follow in with some of the more routine work. There's hundreds of requests for fiscal note information that come through, that don't come to council normally, but are a work item that we have to get done. And the real lobbying that we have and the direction that is very helpful comes from Michelle Douglas of Public Policy Partners. She will be coming before you and meeting with you partly to, you know, convey her information about how the General Assembly works, how you can be effective lobbyists, because frankly, it's much more effective when a council member lobbies for something than it is for a lobbyist or a city staff person. And then she's also extremely good about working in the hallways to make sure that the city of Tacoma Park's positions are known and understood and that there's buy-in. So what I'd like to do this evening is kind of focus the discussion on items that are coming up. These are legislative bills that have been prefiled and that caught our eye as something that the city might be interested in, and I'll turn it over to Jesse to go through those bills.
So the first one I picked out that I thought might be of interest is there's a bill regarding location of alcohol sales near schools, and in reading the bill, it seems to really protect that distance by the, sorry, the sales would have to be in a zone that's commercial or industrial, so I actually don't think that this would impact us at all in reading it more carefully. The other piece of it, though, is that prior to approving an application, the Board of Licensed Commissioners has to solicit input from the affected school or secondary school, place of worship or youth center, and it seems that it would very much protect those entities. And so in my further reading of this bill, I don't see it as something that would affect us at all or be of concern to us, although we did have it on the list. So if anyone wants me to find out more about it or get back to you with additional information, I can do that.
Yeah, Councilmember?
I'm just curious about the genesis of this. What is the motive behind, do you have any ideas as to what is the catalytic issue that causes this thing to?
Right, you know, to be honest, I don't know what the
I actually think there's just a, I think there's a movement, this is, there's been many bills or many proposals lately to get rid of all of the distance requirements that involve alcoholic beverage licenses, that as our community gets more heavily developed, so things are closer together, there's been a push across the county to get rid of these distance requirements. Because it's Montgomery County and every license is different, then there's locks and lots of different versions of things. These bills are coming in one at a time and not as a general idea, but I think it's part of a trend to simply move away from these distance requirements.
To simplify.
I think they just want to have alcohol sales wherever they want them. That's what I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the Dex 1 MC 516 just concerns enabling the Board of Licensed Commissioners to fulfill its notice requirements online, rather than in other, by other means. And the notice, the completed application would have to be posted online at least fourteen days before the hearing date. So that seems like a positive development, easier to access the information online. And I can't see that there's an issue with it. In fact, I think it's an improvement.
It may be something that we might just want to send a letter of support, because I will say, in the past, it's sometimes difficult to get adequate notice of license, alcoholic beverage license applications.
So is it easier if we just give things like a suggestion of-
For that one, yeah, maybe a little straw vote, do you want us to send?
I think the way we can go through this quickly is if after the city clerk describes one, unless people have questions, we'll just do a quick show of hands on the suggestion by the staff.
Can I just ask one question? How does it usually get, or currently get, notice?
They send it in the mail. And if you go online, you can get the, kind of, just the list of locations. But it's not full information about the application.
Okay. So at this time, I see a show of hands for who supports sending a letter in support of MC 516. That is everyone unanimous.
And can I just clarify, our options are a letter of support, testify in support, or the opposite.
Or opposed.
Or opposed.
The next one, MC 1416, Montgomery County Early Voting Centers. This, this law would require ten early voting centers in Montgomery County. And currently, I think eight is required based on our population. This would, and there can be up to nine. This would allow a tenth one in Montgomery, would require a tenth one in Montgomery County. Is there support for that?
Show hands, or questions?
And I would just support testimony instead of a letter.
So do you want to?
Okay. First, let's do, right, let's do, questions.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The question is, is that we have these off-year elections, so that we get to designate in Tacoma Park where we want to have early voting locations. But would this ordinance, assuming that we were sync, sync, in sync, let me put it that way, if that's a term, with the county voting elections, would that, would this ordinance override what we do in terms of designating the location of early voting sites? Because if there's going to be ten in the county, they might say, well, you can have one in Tacoma Park, or zero in Tacoma Park. I'm just trying to think ahead here a little bit. I'm not trying to take a position one way or the other. I'm just asking a question.
I don't think it has anything to do with what happens with, when we synchronize our elections. Where early voting would take place, or how it would take place, is a completely separate issue. This would just basically require the additional early voting site in Montgomery County to ensure more people have access to, to early voting.
I mean, there's still will be lots of discussion about what happens with Tacoma Park.
Right. Whether we'd ever get an early voting site. There isn't one in the city. There's not contemplated one to be in the city at this point.
Councilmember Kova?
Just curious, because as I recall, this got very political when they attempted to move the locations to areas that weren't high-population areas. So are we basically, if we support this, just saying, go ahead and put it in a place that doesn't need it?
No, I think this, I think this is to preserve the original sites and add to new sites.
Okay. But were those two new sites, they could be-
This doesn't identify the sites.
Right.
That's a process that the-
Will be determined, yes. But they, I guess what I'm saying is, they could end up putting them in places that don't make sense, based on what we saw.
Right. I think it was a compromise-
Okay.
-to make sure that the old sites were preserved.
I wonder what the benefit is, though, to Tacoma Park residents of taking a position on this at all.
Right. That's what, that's what I'm wondering.
I mean, I think the benefits for me are twofold. One, it generally supports the concept of making voting easier for people in the county of which we are a part, which could include Tacoma Park. So whether there's one location in Silver Spring, or two locations in Silver Spring, is to be TBD at a later date. And then second, it, I think it had, well, that's really the second part. It has a direct potential benefit for our residents.
Any other questions? No? All right. So we're going to change this to support testimony first, and see if we, how many hands we get that. How many people would support testimony on MC 14-16? One, two, three, all right. How many people would support a letter of support? Vote twice. One, okay. I guess we're not doing anything on this one.
Unless-
Well, I guess, I guess the-
Or at this time, right?
Is it ranked choice voting that we're using?
Or I guess, all right, yes. So you're right. So then you can vote twice. So if the testimony doesn't work now, how many people are letter of support? So now there's four of us. Okay.
Okay. The next one is regarding ranked choice voting. This would authorize the Montgomery County Council to adopt a ranked choice voting method for special elections to fill a vacancy in the county executive office or a member of the county council. And the, the change would be, I mean, right now, it requires a primary and a general election. This would simply require one election, would likely be a true cost-saving measure. And would further our interest in having ranked choice voting be more routine, and something that the state is more able to provide.
Okay. Councilmember Mael?
A request and then a comment on this issue. If the clerk is aware on any of the bills that our, any of our local delegation is sponsoring, then it would be helpful to know that. And then the second specific comment is, this is a, I chaired a right-to-vote task force at the county level over the last two years, and this was a recommendation of the task force as a way to save money, increase turnout, and make a number of other improvements in process, as well as being able to test this approach in these contexts in the, in the, in elections, such as the Board of Election, the Board of Education election. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Oh, let me, basically, sounds like a good idea to me, because, you know, we want ranked choice voting to be spread beyond Tacoma Park. But this means that without primaries, then the candidates, all the candidates would be campaigning right up until the November date of the general election for the county council or county executive.
This would only be to fill the vacancy. So it would be a special election.
Oh, this is for special election.
A special election to fill the vacancy.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Can I just, Jim, one question, if you don't mind? So for people who don't pay attention until there's only two candidates, how does that play in, in terms of the idea that it would potentially increase turnout? If, I'm not sure if I'm being clear on what I'm asking, but some people, you know, when there's five candidates right now, I don't know, I'll wait until there's only two, and then I'll decide. So is it, has it been shown, I guess is what I'm asking, that that would increase turnout?
The clerk may have more information than I do on the exact text of this bill, and how it's structured, because that could make a difference in response to this question. But I think in general, in an election where you inform people that this, this is their one and only time to have a vote, then it gets the turnout that you would get at what would normally be a general election.
I mean, I have the bill in front of me that I do-
That I could answer the question despite looking at it. Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments on this one? All right. So at the moment, what's in front of us, the staff recommendation is a letter of support. So I can see a show of hands for all those who support a letter of support for MC 15-16. One, two, three, four, everyone unanimous.
So the next one is, I think, potentially, if I may say, rather an exciting development. The, this MC 2516, elections voting by county residents for Montgomery County Board of Education elections. This is requested by, among others, Senator Raskin, Delegate Moon, and Delegate Smith, and a host of others. So this would propose, it would propose an amendment to the Maryland Constitution that would enable the Montgomery County Council to set qualifications for who may vote for Board of Education. And so it would be a constitutional amendment, which would have to be voted on by the whole state. So whether it would actually ever happen, I, I, I'm doubtful, but I'm not optimistic, anyway. But I think this is an exciting development, and something that the council may want to testify in support of.
Was the idea, then, to allow sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, or what was, is there any-
Right. Or non-citizens, non-citizens to vote. It would be up to the, if the constitutional amendment passed, it would still be up to the county council to, to set those criteria. So it would be a long way down the road.
In my understanding, the county council has already discussed this, and looks, I believe, took a vote, and six members of the county council support it, so.
So there would be different eligibility for people who are going to vote for Board of Direct, School Board members as distinct from, say, the county executive or county council members at the same election?
Right. That's right. So-
Things seem to be getting more complicated.
So it would be similar to what we do, in that we, we set, we get to set criteria for who votes, and the council gets to set criteria for who votes in city elections. And this would enable the county council to do that for Board of Education elections.
Councilmember Mael?
I just know that this was something that was in place in New York City from, like, 1967 to 2006. And the second observation is that, I think these things sometimes seem complicated from the perspective of a body who's making decisions on them. But from the perspective of the individual voter, they either, they can vote now, they get to keep voting, or they've never been able to vote before, and now they can vote. But at the individual level, it may not be complicated at all. And so that's, that's where this change for a Board of Election eligibility, flexibility in terms of who's eligible to vote for Board of Education. What you could have is the county, at some point in the future, if there's a statewide vote, saying, we're going to let this additional class of residents participate in the election, and then they would be participating, and they hadn't previously been. So I think that's a worthwhile thing to support. And, sorry, the one other observation I'd make is that it's somewhat interesting to me that in, at a municipal level, our constitution allows municipalities to decide who votes, but at a county level, the county is stuck with the state rules.
Right. And why did it change in 2016?
I don't know. Yeah. But I know there's an active campaign to try to change it back.
Yeah.
So what would be the process for actually doing this?
You mean the constitutional amendment process?
Right.
Yeah. So, sorry, I don't have that. Yeah, we could, I can let you know. But it would require, so it would require, as a constitutional amendment, it would have to appear on the ballot in a statewide election.
Okay. So on this one, I think, the C. Clerk, you actually recommended testimony? Is that correct?
That's my recommendation.
Can we do testimony and a letter of support?
Well, it comes with a-
Yeah, it actually comes, we submit, right. All right. So all those in favor, raise your hand, of submitting testimony for MC 25-16. Unanimous.
Can I talk about the next one?
Yes.
The next bill is MC 2816, has to do with the property tax and the homestead tax credit percentage. And Delegate Carr has proposed this. Right now, if the property, assessed value of a home increases by more than 10% when an assessment comes out every three years, the amount that the homeowner can pay can only be up to 10% increase. So you never have to pay like 12% increase or something, if that's what the assessment went. And then the following year, you'd have the additional 2%. Delegate Carr has proposed reducing that 10% cap to a 5% cap. Probably Tacoma Park would be the most hard hit if this were to be adopted in Montgomery County. Because, for example, right now, we're still on using the property assessment that was done in 2013, when our assess, assessable base was quite low. I have to say, we've been looking, I've been looking forward to new assessments that will more accurately reflect the value of properties in Tacoma Park. And when I was looking through future budgets, and what we can do for the staff increases that we phased over time, I anticipated that this 10% would be a possibility. And in fact, in looking at kind of historical items, because multifamily properties and commercial properties don't have the 10% cap, my estimation is that we may increase by even 13% in our assessable base that, that we can tax on for FY '17. If that's reduced by 5%, it's a fairly significant number. And back-of-the-envelope kinds of things, and again, it's all guesses, but it could affect us by about $500,000. And, you know, obviously, we can address that with changes in tax rates and those kinds of things. But that's a fairly big hit. And I think that, I appreciate kind of the idea about, as a taxpayer, not wanting to have steep increases, and 10% can be quite steep. But I think this is an awfully hard hit. And I think that Tacoma Park, because all of our community is in one assessable base, and isn't, can't phase in year after year, like larger communities, really gets the, the bad end of the stick on this. My preference would be to actually testify in opposition to it, again, because I think the other delegates may not kind of realize how it could affect one community in a much more difficult way than in other communities. So that's my recommendation. It's, it's a complex issue. I'm happy to answer some questions about it.
Any questions?
Suzy, I think that was helpful. I think it definitely lays a framework for what your concerns are. But I think for me personally, the level of specificity that would be helpful as I consider voting in such sort of short notice on what, you know, whether we should testify in opposition. I think it would be helpful just to see ballpark numbers, to see how it, you know, sometimes seeing it on a piece of paper is more helpful. So I would just request that, if that's at all possible.
I certainly was planning on preparing that. I was playing around with things today, but it was a busy day. So did not get that finalized. But, you know, I'll see how I can share that with you. And I'm not sure what that means for what action you may take this evening.
Councilmember Mael?
Thank you. So just ballpark, am I understanding it right? So if you had a house that was assessed at $500,000 last time, and let's say it was being taxed at $500,000, and the appraisal went up to a million dollars, that you would only tax on $550,000 in the first year, and $500-
And then another 10%.
Or $625,000 the next year.
That's right.
And it would change that, that rate?
That's right.
Okay. I support testifying in opposition. I would say, however, that that could be testimony that was more nuanced. So for example, if this proposal were qualified by the value of the house, so for example, the, and this is all complicated. So what a resident sees is, how much is my bill? So from a resident's perspective, it's just costly or less costly. But, you know, you could, for example, have 105% on the first $200,000 in value, and then 110% on the remainder, or any other threshold. You could look at the, the median property price in the county, or the bottom third, and find a way to create a more progressive property tax system. But just as a flat system like this, it seems to me, it just, it's just an advantage for people with the most, the most well-off people with the highest-value homes.
Well, it certainly does make a big- Well, it certainly does make a big difference. One of the things that I also thought was that if something like this actually had legs, and I don't know that it does, from, Michelle Douglas did kind of test out, test the waters a little bit, but if it were something in a farther-out year, so you could plan for it and know something's coming, that would be useful. But to have it hit this fast really hurts Tacoma Park. So, but I appreciate, you know, the, the magnitude of the difference, and on, and who gets hit the hardest is also something that we should mention, I think.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, it's, it's also bad that it would come just at the point in time when we are going to be realizing this growth.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking, it's not now!
I mean, maybe last, you know, maybe a year from now, or two years from now, when we've, we've gotten our, gotten back to where we were in twenty-ten, but not now. So I, I would support our testimony in, in opposition. But I, that is not the short circuit with Councilmember Koreshi asked for.
Right. And may I ask the city manager, given that we have a city council meeting next Monday night, are, are we talking about testifying on Monday?
I'm actually, I'm actually considering going to that and having Deputy City Manager handle things, or having somebody else who can answer these questions attend on, on Monday night. We've got to figure that out.
Mm-hmm.
I may unfortunately be the best person to speak to it.
Councilmember Culver?
Yes, can you just clarify, and this builds on what Councilmember Mayhew was talking about, what's the distinction between what a person pays and what their home is assessed at? In other words, is it up to a ten percent increase in their tax bill?
In their tax bill, not, not in, not in what their assessment is. So the, a number of years ago, my house doubled in its property.
Right.
Value.
Right.
But I only paid ten percent more the next year, and then ten percent more the next year. So it's, that's how, that's how it works. So it, it does go for, for what you pay out, but the value of the property is kind of on the books that gets there, and those assessments happen every three years.
But so I saw some data through Progressive Neighbors earlier in the year that showed that the gap within the county between the actual market value, you know, by zip code, between the market value of houses on average and what they, what people are actually assessed at, the biggest gap was in the wealthiest zip codes, which means that you could argue that in the wealthiest areas, there's the greatest amount of underpaying taxes. Now, people might say, "Well, in Bethesda or other places," that's because the value of those homes shot up higher than, than they did here. But I guess the question is, I don't know where we fall in that, but, but how does this compare to elsewhere within the county? I mean, are other communities likely to be against this too? I'm just not sure.
I think, I think.
Are we going on record as saying we want to increase people's taxes by ten percent, or?
I, I think, my guess is that there'll be quite a lot of opposition, because it also affects county taxes and state of Maryland tax receipts, and everybody's concerned about tax receipts. This is, the hundred and ten percent is what it's been for a long time. So we're kind of used to that amount. Reducing that, you know, a proposal to reduce that probably is not going to be well-received by the county, especially with the win decision and the other things that they're paying back. But I don't know how it really affects, I don't know how Tacoma Park compares to, say, a Bethesda neighborhood or something. I don't have that answer.
Any other questions on this one? All right, let's just do a quick show of hands to see if we have folks in support of testifying in opposition to MC twenty-eight sixteen. One, two, three, four, five.
Okay.
But prior to that, if the city manager can.
I'm going to try to send out good information on the, on the data, so that you'll have a chance to look at that and.
Yeah, and I would just say that I just want to sort of be in a comfortable spot, but from what I've heard, I'm, I'm very comfortable with it, I'm there.
I'd love to, but I, but I think the information's important, and I'll get it out.
I feel like I know enough yet, so.
Yeah, it's, it is not an easy topic, so I'm happy to.
I mean, I went to Losol, because I don't do math, so this is.
I mean, it just, to me, the basic thing is this is a tax cut for the rich. If you have a million-dollar house, and it doubles in value to two million dollars, and the state, and the county passes, or the state passes a law that says that your taxes can only go up by five percent instead of ten percent, that is, that is primarily a tax cut for the rich, or the people who's, who have become rich because of property value, rapid appreciation. And that's where most of this, most of the change in tax will come from, is rich neighborhoods.
Yep.
Moving on.
Okay, the last few, the MC thirty-three sixteen, foreclosed property registry civil penalty for failure to register. It increases the maximum civil penalty that a jurisdiction in Montgomery County may enact for failure to submit a certain required registration to the state foreclosed property registry. I talked to Sarah Danes, our Housing and Community Development Director, this evening. She, she, she doesn't recommend that. I mean, this would be enabling legislation, it wouldn't require anything, but she indicated that this registry is not really of much use to her, and to pursue people who are not registered would not be helpful to, to the city. And coupled with that, and we just add the next one, it's also enabling legislation to clarify that a municipal corporation in the county may regulate construction, repair, remodeling of single-family residential houses, buildings, which is not new, but, or other structures, because I think there was something left out when this was adopted for. Again, we, Ms. Danes is very comfortable with the process we have with Montgomery County and their building permits. They have to get a permit letter from the city. And she indicated we don't have the staff to, at this point, have any, there's not anyone who could do this in, in her department right now. But again, it's just enabling legislation, so with the two of these, I don't know if there's any interest in testifying at all, or sending a letter. Other questions?
Councilmember Smith?
Question about something completely different, another bill that I want staff to review.
Okay, can we do it when we're done with this?
Yeah, after we're done with these bills, there's one more.
I'll come right to you.
Okay.
Councilmember Koreshi? Or no, it's just, Councilmember Schultz, sorry, my thing hasn't changed yet.
Okay. I, I understand that, that the foreclosure registry, it hasn't been particularly a useful document, because it isn't well, it isn't well-maintained by those who are designated at the state level to be on top of this thing and make it, make it actually work, that there's stuff on there that doesn't belong there, and there's others that don't get properly recorded. So I'm, I'm wondering if Ms. Danes' concern is that just saddling people with a five-thousand-dollar penalty is, is perhaps a bit heavy-handed, when the problem with somebody not being on the registry might not be the fault of the, I don't know, whoever the responsible party is, as opposed to somebody at the state level, or, 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 or somebody else. I mean, what I'm trying to say is that the foreclosure process involves a whole series of different legal steps, and different people who have to carry out their roles. And anybody who's gone through real estate settlements, when there's not even a foreclosure, knows that it can be an extremely, a thing fraught with pitfalls and errors and omissions. And so it seemed to me that maybe a five-thousand-dollar penalty for an error seems a little bit, you know, onerous.
I don't think we have to weigh in, because there's those questions.
Councilmember Mayhew?
I would just ask the city clerk to clarify that when a property is foreclosed upon, it's a bank that did the foreclosure, and so this would be a fee on the bank, not the, not the person who's losing their home.
Actually, this is a fee on the purchaser of a foreclosed property. So that's, that's part of the reason that this doesn't get to where the real problem is, which is often the banks.
Why would you charge a fee to the person who's buying a foreclosed property?
I don't know, but that's what it says in the bill.
It seems crazy.
Yeah.
It seems like you'd be, it's like you've got vacant, unused property in your community, and you're going to make it more expensive for somebody to put it in use.
You wish you'd given them a, a grant.
Yeah, let me just read a little section that, I will at least clarify it. At the time of the foreclosure sale of residential property, the person responsible for conducting the foreclosure shall obtain from the foreclosure purchaser a written acknowledgment of the requirements of this section. So it's the purchaser of a foreclosed property that has to file for this registry.
Okay.
And would be penalized if they didn't file. The purpose of it, I can't pretend to.
So it, it sounds like on these two enabling pieces of legislation, we're okay taking a pass? Is that what I'm hearing? All right, last one?
The last one is, I'm sorry, I just lost my page here. The last one is, again, it's just a little correction, it clarifies that quarterly testing of drinking water utilized, the, the testing utilized the latest cycle of unregulated contaminant monitoring regulations established in accordance with the Federal Public Health Service Act. Before, it was, say, it said that it was the, the fourth. Yeah, it was, it was like a very specific iteration of this list, and, as opposed to always the most recent. So, and this is Delegate Smith's? Right. I mean, I, I actually think that this is, you know, we can not say anything, or we could send in a letter of support, because obviously, you'd want them to use the most recent listing of contaminants.
I just think it's ironic that they call them unregulated contaminants that are, that are monitored under regulations.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy to weigh in in support of this one.
So I would do the same, I'd support it.
Any other questions on this one for us? All right, a show of hands, who would like to send a letter of support? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Six out of seven. All right, Councilmember Smith?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Jesse, there's a bill coming out of Senator Roger Mano's office on universal voter registration. Can you see if you can get some information? It hasn't been assigned a number yet. I think it's a good bill, I believe it's mirrored off of Oregon's bill that forces people to be opt-in once they go through the NVA. I think it'd be a fantastic bill for us to support, but I don't have the bill myself.
I'll give it.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Is there a full list of all of these bills, the county, or by-county bills?
There is on their website. If you go to the Montgomery County delegation website, and you click on legislation, it has a running list of the local and the by-county bills. We'll be starting to get those things out to you on a regular basis, and once we get into the session, Michelle Douglas works with us on a, on a list. We, we try never to get the whole list, but we try to target topics that are of interest to us, so that we can see which ones we want to take a position on.
Yeah, I mean, my comment was going to be that I think that's, it'd be helpful to share that, that web link with the council earlier in the process, and particularly with the public, because we have so many members of the public speaking about civic engagement, who could, who have the inclination and potentially the time to look through bills and identify things that could be a priority.
You know, I see, looking at the cover sheet, I.
Did you put it there?
I put, no, I said I, the link, I was putting the link, but there is no link there, so that wasn't helpful. Look at that.
And I would just ask that if we, if, if we identify, as Councilmember Smith did, additional bills that have been proposed that we want to support, that we have time on future agendas, that, that, and I think we normally do that.
Yeah, we normally do, and that's always good.
It's been a whole year, so.
I know.
Great, all right, moving on, city manager's quarterly report.
Okay, Jason, you want to call that up on the screen? And I'll start first by saying, in your package, there's, there's two portions to this. There is the financial report, which I do want to call your attention to. You always like the little girl. The financial report is prepared every quarter, for every quarter. This is for the July one to September thirty, two thousand and fifteen period. We're in good shape with this financial report. One of the things, if you look at the executive summary, it gives the clues about it, and the, the most important thing is the real property taxes, we were just talking about that. Within the first quarter, only six percent of the budgeted amount was received. That's very typical, because the big, in, the big times when we receive the money are in October and in January. So already in October, which is after the scope of this quarter, we received five million dollars. So it's one of those things that we always have to watch, and it, it comes in fits and spurts. But we are pleased so far with the financial report. I think that as you go through this, if you have questions, please let us know. One of the things that I'm going to be trying to do, and it's going to take a while, is to have this kind of information, so it's readily at hand whenever you're interested in it. We also have a summary from a variety of different departments, and if you go to admin, this is a big one for me, so I'm going to spend a moment on it. We recruited and selected a new deputy city manager.
I like that one.
Yeah. A new finance director, and a new newsletter editor during the quarter. We formalized our technology steering committee, and did a whole investment strategy, and Jason is overseeing that. We've created some cross-departmental employee teams, and I, I really do feel that this kind of involvement of our staff has already been well-received in our information team, network team, and our senior leadership team. We transitioned to a new financial software system, a new time and management software system, and they both work. And we renovated the finance office space. Communications, we're busy as always, next. Housing and Community Development had a number of good programs. Some of the bike and pedestrian safety activities were, were good, and I, I don't know how many of you saw the little stories on the I Can Shine Bike Camp, but it really was a wonderful Let's see, grants, we do lots of work on grants. We did sixteen properties were repaired in the home repair program this year. We've had some, some new AV projects. We're working on the parking study, we got the grant from, for a portion of that, and we're working on other aspects of the parking study, and moving forward on some of the vacant and blighted property activities that we'll be coming back to council on.
Yes, Susie?
Yeah.
I can notice that the, there's no, omitted is the recreation analysis site, study, which is on the new AV for what it's worth, and it's.
Right.
It was administered by HCD and not Recreation.
Right. Right, so Recreation put its on there, but the, but the HCD did not, did not include it on theirs. You're right.
Miss Love, one quick request. When city staff are, are carrying out home renovations, home repairs, the program, if the city staff would inform the council member of the word in which they're located, forty-eight hours, twenty-four hours in advance, that'd be helpful.
Okay, let's go on. Library always does wonderful children's programming, and adult programming. And of course, we worked on the concept plan for library. Go back, Public Works has worked really hard on a variety of things, and I think the Green Home Energy Challenge is, is, been going really well past this date, but I do want to say, twenty percent of our single-family homes are part of the Green Energy Challenge, ten percent of our households citywide. 10% of our households citywide. Those are just stunning numbers. And, you know, it has caught the eye of the programmers at the Georgetown University Energy Prize because really it's a phenomenal return. And I thank everyone for participating, including the council members who are doing their part. We've worked with the polystyrene ban implementation. Dog park, you want to mention a little bit about the dog park? There was a request for information on that. We have currently gotten and signed off on the easement related to the Montgomery County Public Schools access portion. Park and Planning has now sent us their comments on the portion that affects park and planning property. The review so far of those comments are that they're pretty straightforward comments that we can accommodate, but we may need to get a couple permits. So there may be a little bit of a permit delay. Other things we can still work on and we're moving forward on on our property, but we are pleased that the actual comments were not onerous. We do need to look at a, we may have to look at a forest conservation permit, so I wanted to let you know about that. On the next item, the food waste program, we brought the entire collection in houses of August 1 and we're pleased with that. I want to alert you to a problem that our Public Works Department is having right now. And that is that the place that we take the compost, food compost, food waste for composting is closing. They move us around to, we've had to find different locations. They, we're probably going to have to split up and take some to one location, some to another location, which causes us money and more time spent in trucks delivering that. And we're having similar problems both with our recycling disposal and our trash disposal. What seems to be happening is that the jurisdictions are not working cooperatively to accommodate where we dispose of waste. And so we're going to try a couple things to contact the major jurisdictions, maybe through COG, to try to pull together the group that says, how do we, especially as a small municipality, continue to have access to locations to dispose of our products? So a lot of time right now is being spent by staff at Public Works calling different locations. Can we bring their stuff to you today? And how much will it cost? And can we get a deal? And then they'll say, well, we're closing because we had a fire or we're doing a cleanup, so no, you can't come, go somewhere else. So it's been a real problem. So I wanted to alert you to that. We'll follow up on that. But if you're talking with other jurisdictions, you might just want to say, hey, can't we all get along and figure out a plan for this? And if they have to choose to exclude somebody, I'd rather that they exclude commercial customers than us, rather than municipalities.
I just asked one question. It seems like in a few instances, a little container gets missed when the other stuff is picked up. And I think people reach out and the Public Works does come around and get it. But I don't know if there's something just because it's small or it gets missed, but I've had, just in a week, I've had, or in two weeks, I've had several questions raised about that. So, and I don't know if it's just, you know, it's a smaller thing and maybe they don't see it.
But that kind of thing, we need to know about, so.
As I say, they've been responsive when it's been pointed out, so I don't think it's a serious problem, just something to take a look at.
Okay, well, thanks for raising that.
I'll ask a question on the food waste composting. When it was a pilot, we were using an outside entity. Hypothetically, if we were using an outside entity, would that mean that our staff wouldn't be on the phone all day calling places?
No, because the problem is, the problem's not the collection, the problem's the disposal.
But the outside entity, yeah.
That's right. We still had to work to get a location for that outside entity to dispose of it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next. Sidewalk and stormwater projects continue. Recreation has lots of special events. And then, I won't go through these, but we do have police department results, information from January through September. One of the things that's always confusing when we deal with quarterly reports is that the police department, for the way that it has to report its crime statistics, has to work on a calendar year basis. And so they've always, they're always looking for January to December as of the year, when we are looking at a July through June as a year. So just wanted to, when you see that, it's always confusing, but we do have this information for you. We'll be able to have an opportunity to have our police department talk through some of these things with you. So I think that's all I had. Yes?
Just, I mean, one comment on this in general, even though I understand that there are three cold cases, I'd rather not see an explanation like that because the crime's crime, it's in the report. You know, unless they were, unless we're double counting somehow, things that were previously counted the year before.
Yes, they weren't counted before.
So I think it's just simply irrelevant that they're there and that this is when they're being tracked by the police department. I don't know why that stat, to me, just stood out as if they somehow didn't matter as much.
I think that it, that's, maybe the important thing to do is to word it differently. They mattered a lot, which is why the police paid attention to them. It's just they were reported much later than they occurred. So, but I think that you're, that the term cold case is not maybe the appropriate one for this.
I would just say that when people, when residents, citizens look at this and they see that there's four cases rape, the natural thing is to think, oh, rape is, and this particular case is on a rise from the prior year and the prior year before that and the prior year before that.
Right.
Which would be a misconstrual of the information.
That's right.
It tells people that we're having increasing rapes now, when in fact, and so I'm not sure how to recommend that we handle that.
But I think just.
So what this is saying is that the alleged incident took place?
A long time ago.
A long time ago.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I know.
It's just not clear.
Yeah, I think wording it is better because one thing that's the unfortunate reality, and I used to prosecute sex crimes, but sex crimes, one of the more challenging things about them is late reporting. And I think that's a way to probably term it because I think that's what ends up happening is folks and victims report late because of the various, you know, pressures that you have, societal, familial, related to those types of very personal crimes.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Have we done any analysis on our website stats? Do we know why our number of users is going down and why our bounce rate is still so high or?
Well, this is from the first, this is from the first quarter, so it's not our new website, obviously. With the new website, we have continued, we'll be able to monitor very closely where people go on the website and what the issues are. I think one of the things about the bounce rate is that so many people use mobile devices and our old website was really hard to use for that. And so they would try to get someplace and they gave up.
Has the contractor that we hired said anything about our PC bounce rate or have they?
I don't know, that's something we can check out.
Yeah, not that I know of. Because, I mean, it's just 47% of it, just 46%, that's really high. Thank you.
Councilmember Cova?
Just a question. It says violent crime is down. And if you set aside the crimes for which the numbers are really small, it's hard to really get any statistical significance. It looks like robbery's down and assault is up and the others are kind of around the same. And I think, you know, we live in a pretty safe community and these numbers would be great if they were all lower, obviously, but is it that definitive that violent crime is down?
I'm not going to answer that. I think it's much more helpful if I can have our crime analyst and police department address that because sometimes it's more in which things count as violent crime versus not. And so I'd be hesitant to actually answer it right off the top of my head.
Just two things. One, thinking about Public Works, sorry to be a minor thing, but can we please get that trash can? It's the, I know.
And it's psycho, no?
Yeah, I know. And the second thing I'd just like to say regarding the police department and the reporting is that we had a meeting in October, I believe, with, around the Sycamore, Columbia Avenue, Elm. And it would be great to be able to get that PowerPoint. I know the police department's been very busy with the homicide.
Right.
But residents do want to start moving on many of the recommendations from the police department. That'd be wonderful. And also, I'll just say that having a, having the police department come to our city council meetings, talk about the statistics where we can ask questions is very useful. I think it's also very useful to our residents when we have smaller meetings and can have that interaction with the police department, have that time to ask questions. I think we all benefited a great deal from that meeting and so I.
Yeah, it worked really well.
Yeah. I encourage my colleagues to, not all at once, but to work with the city manager and the chief to look into having smaller meetings in the community, to look at some of the different areas and what different crime rates are and what types of crimes are happening in different parts of our city. Oh, gosh, okay. Councilmember Mayhew?
I think the opening notes that the annual audit is not completed yet and that we have had some difficulties with our, one of the two contractors that we work with.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to go into that right now. We do have, I think the annual audit is being sent in tomorrow, so I feel very good about it. And I really appreciate Karen Anorato's leadership in making sure that it's done well.
Great, so we'll see that soon?
Yes.
That's essentially my question, was just, we'll see it soon.
You should see it by next week.
Great. And then, just on the police crime data, I know we're ultimately reporting it to the FBI, I believe, in some standardized way. And I'd be interested at some point in seeing what we submit to them as well as what we get as a council. So just sort of, I feel like the format changes a lot and the colors often confuse me.
Yeah.
So I just want to learn about different ways we might standardize the reporting so that when we see it, it, anyway, I just find myself sometimes having to stare at the data more than I want to. Thanks.
Councilmember Creasy?
I just wanted to follow up with what Mayor Stewart mentioned earlier. I actually got an email from a constituent on Grant Avenue indicating that there was no, much to the dismay of my kids this week, the leaves have disappeared from the front of my home. But the folks at, on Grant Avenue have been saying that they, the yard trash or the pickup for the leaves over the last two weeks, they've been skipped. So I just wanted to let you know. I think they've been trying to follow up with folks at Public Works about that and they haven't received a response. And as of 7:00 PM this evening, nothing was picked up, so I just wanted to.
Okay. The way that, I'll pass that along and see what happens. Yard waste gets picked up on a rotating basis over a five-week period. And so sometimes it takes a couple weeks before things get, the leaves get picked up. One of the things that has been different this year is that all the leaves came down at once. And, you know, usually, sometimes the leaves don't come down until mid-December. And so the routing through the different sections that they've split themselves up into has taken longer, I think, because so many leaves have come down at once. But I'll pass it along and if you can tell me where on Grant that's an issue, that'd be helpful.
Thank you. I think the address in question is 103 Grant.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
Great. All right, I'd like to thank the city manager and W City manager for the quarterly report. And now we can move on to the overview of city products.
Thank you. I think we are going to try to go through this quickly because I know we have other items. But one of the things I want, can you go back just for a second? On the website, oh, we went really far back. Okay, on the website, if you go to Initiatives, which is across the top, and then to the project directory, which is halfway down this column, you get to a list of most of our kind of new items that are underway. It is not our intention to have items on here that have been completed. And what we're trying to do is that when something is completed, it will be shown, it will show up in a quarterly report and then it'll be removed from this listing. Other items, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to deal with, which are some ongoing things but that people have interest in, and so we're still trying to figure out how we display that information. One of the things that wanted you to see was that we've tried to choose project titles that people seem to know what they are. That wasn't as easy as you might sound. We tried to classify them in some ways. We give a sense of when the project is to be completed and when there's a ward that it's in, we identify that. Each of these columns can be sorted, so if you're looking in alphabetical order or by project classification or date or ward, you can do that. And so you can play around with that at your leisure.
It is.
Let's see, is there one that you want to start with, Jason, that you think?
Well, sure. I think something that we can do is just dive a little bit deeper into a project to show you the type of information that is provided in each of the, under each of the projects. A gentleman asked earlier about the dog park and the Tacoma Junction. Both of those are projects that are included on this list. So if you go to the Tacoma Junction redevelopment website, and maybe an issue that you were experiencing was with the search engine, which is, we're working on right now, and it's being crawled as we speak. So hopefully in a few weeks, that'll improve its functionality. But if you go into a project, like this is the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, each project will have a brief overview of what the project entails as well as information on the current status. It'll have contact information for whoever the city staff person is, and we're actually tracking some projects that the city's not necessarily taking the lead on, but we're actually serving it in a monitoring role. It'll have the contact information for whoever the appropriate project lead is at the county level or SHA, wherever the project, whoever's in charge of the project. Additionally, there's a timeline provided for each project, budget information where available. And there are also links and notes for projects where appropriate. For the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, there's a chronological listing of updates all the way back until, well, yeah, some time ago. And there are links actually to each of the iterations of the concepts and the different resolutions and agenda items, notes from listening sessions, et cetera. So we, our goal is to create project pages that can serve as a homepage for each of the projects, that can link to different parts of the website where there's more information. But residents and other stakeholders should be able to go to this one page and have an overview and then be able to dive a little bit deeper from this page.
Jason, and one thing I would ask is, is it possible, those events are projects that we actually had City TV record something, if we can link that in there too, so that people can actually see it?
It's a great idea.
Yes, that is a great idea. Ms. Ludo, were there any other projects in particular you wanted to dive into a little bit?
Let's see, you want to go down to the, is the Taco Bell? I want to just see what.
Sure.
It's still on here. Sorry, didn't mean to bring back bad memories. But one of the things that I wanted to, you know, indicate here is that, you know, even when this is something, here on the right-hand side, it says Tacoma Park's role in the project is now to monitor it because it goes through the county process at this point. So I just wanted to kind of show that even though our part was, was pretty much done, we're still monitoring it. And then.
And when we developed this site, originally that was lead when it was under our purview. And you'll notice under project, lead and contact information, Mr. Osberg is listed as well as the appropriate contact from the planning department.
Montgomery County Plan, Montgomery County Plan.
Can you show us the sidewalk ones? Because I thought that was pretty impressive, to be able to look at.
Which sidewalk one?
Or just one of the, is it the ADA, just to show the schedule of the sidewalks? I know that it's something Councilmember Mail has asked for in the past.
ADA Sidewalk Compliance Program?
Yeah.
Yes? Where is it?
It was there. It was.
What was it?
This just deals with ADA.
Was there a specific project?
Maybe it was a different sidewalk one?
Let's see. I was looking at it the other day, and I thought it listed all the completed projects, what was coming up.
And that actually might be on the Public Works page.
Yeah.
There was a details link, if you go back to that page in the upper right. It may have been there. The green writing, ADA Sidewalk Compliance, for details.
I don't think that's a link.
I don't know what I was looking at then. But whatever I was, it was really impressive.
Well, try and get a link to that, because that would be useful.
I think sidewalks should be there.
Right, it should be someplace at hand, yeah.
And how about road maintenance?
Was it sidewalk design and construction?
Oh, maybe that was it.
Yeah, try that.
There you go. Yes. And if you click on Plan, then you can get to the plan for it.
Yeah, having that all in one place like that, that's awesome.
And then, will it be one of these for road maintenance too?
That sounds like a good idea.
And I think this is going to be a dynamic list. As Ms. Ludo mentioned earlier, as projects are completed, we're going to find a different way to continue to have that information available, but not necessarily as part of this project listing. As you think of projects that you'd like to see, or you think it makes sense to see on here, we can pretty easily create those pages.
And of course, something like road maintenance never's over. It's never completed.
Right. So it may be something, it may fit here, or it may fit somewhere else, but we want to make it clear that it's really easy to see where it is and link to it, yeah.
Well, one thought is that, that we're, in New Hampshire Gardens, we have the WSSC Water Main Project, which is probably a two-year project. They're about a third of the way through it so far. That has very little, if anything, to do with the city of Tacoma Park. I mean, we have a minor role to play in that regard. But it is the sort of thing that residents would love to be able to have a place to go and find out what they can, because right now, there is no place.
Right. One of the things that I, we're not to yet, but I really want to have is a map of the city. You click on your block, or whatever, and you can see all the different things that are happening in that area, and then links to, say, the WSSC page, where it says what that is, or whatever. And for those things that are geographically based, I think that'd be really helpful.
Sure.
Councilmember Schultz, as you and I navigated through some of that the other day after our meeting, I was thinking along those same lines, something like that could be added here, if for no other reason to provide information or links to the appropriate source of information at WSSC.
Yeah, just steer them away from me. I'm just kidding, folks, I'm just kidding.
Councilmember, do you have... Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
You didn't press your button.
Two, two comments. One, I think the archiving part is really important. So, not just because of sunshine laws, but also because I often find myself needing to go back and figure out what did happen on that project. Maybe I'm dealing with a complaint, maybe I'm just trying to recollect process so that I can explain to people how some new process is going to go that's similar. And so that could be really important. And I'd suggest that before anything comes off this list, that we just let people know, let the council know that something's going to come off, because it's done. And then it's just, there's sort of a information moment. And then with regard to each of the links, when you click them, I think it'd be really important, there's a little box in the upper right that has targeted completion date, but I think it also should say initiation date. So, because that creates at least a subtle pressure on us to make sure that the initiation date and the target date aren't wildly different than whatever it was that we planned. Or at least, we're keeping track of just how many years, or months, days, it has been since we started it.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. I sent an email earlier suggesting that we add another project on this list for the raised crosswalks on Maple Avenue.
Right.
That's all. Thank you.
All right. So this is, I think this looks terrific. It was a lot of fun spending a Sunday afternoon going, looking at it.
I think this is, can you just say, if you don't mind, I, Mayor, I think this is an extraordinary asset to have on our website. Because what it does is, it sort of slices the birthday cake horizontally, rather than vertically, and means that you can find things, everything you want to find out, say, about any particular project. You don't have to go fishing around through various departments and trying to guess which department the project might be in. And like the work on the recreation, that could be in two different departments, but you're going to be in one spot.
Yeah, we have both of those on here. But, yeah. One of the things that's also helpful for is staff, because when a person gets a call, and somebody asks about a project, and you know it's not in your department, but you're not sure where it is, you can actually go here and get to the right contact person. There's nothing worse than the complaints that I get. Well, I called them, and they said they didn't know. And then they just left it hanging. No, we really do need to provide an answer, so. Thanks for any feedback you give us.
Thank you.
Terrific. All right. Now, the city council is scheduled to vote, to go into closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding Washington Adventist Hospital's petition to relocate, and to discuss pending or potential litigation, including administrative proceedings before the Maryland Healthcare Commission pursuant to annotated code of the Maryland General Provisions Article 3-305B7 and 3-305B8. The council will now convene in a public, convene, will not convene in public after the closed session. We will then, after the closed session, have an administrative function section, at which we will talk about how we are going to work together as a city council. And one of the things that we're going to report back next week are some of the items that we're going to discuss.
Would you like to move to closed session?
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? We're in closed session.